is to be excluded. Thank you.
Excellent. So, as the board's aware, the use of tourist home is not normally allowed in agriculture or conservation zone district, but uses that are not normally allowed may be allowed by special exception because a special exception would allow you to impose conditions or restrictions on that use in order to make it compatible with the by right uses in that district. We require in our code and 17047-G for the applicant to share it with you why they think that's appropriate, and you can see the application provided. The applicant has provided all the information required of them and also suggested some potential conditions for the permit that we can look over in a little bit. Lastly, just let me say the public hearing was properly noticed pursuant to Code of Virginia Section 15-22204, and the neighbors were notified, and as has been recent practice, a yard sign was placed in their yard.
I do have one question for Ms. Summers, because you speak fast, you folks in Page County. You speak very fast. At the end, you said that one of the conditions was the permit would not transfer upon sale of the property, but I believe that you also said that if it's, if the property were transferred to a member of the Massey family, that would be, that would not apply. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so they would retain the permit if it was a family transfer and not a sale?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
So, at this point, it'd be appropriate to open your public hearing, hear what the neighbors have to say.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Massey tourist home only. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up to the mic, give us your name and the district you live in, and let us know what you're thinking.
I'm Jimmy Swindler, Stonewall Hawthorne District, here to speak in support of Mr. and Mrs. Massey. I apologize for my dress. I mean no disrespect, but I was in Sperryville all day, and I wanted to get to the gym, and I didn't want to go home because then I knew I'd be late. And if it's any consolation, I smell worse than I look. But anyway, Mr. and Mrs. Massey, we've been neighbors for a long time. We live just a short stretch down Richmond Road there. You know, I've been driving past their property now on a near daily basis for 20 years, and I know very few people who take better care of their property than they do. It's always, it's fun to look at every single day, every morning and every afternoon, and I expect the same or more from their new venture, and I think it's a great, I personally think it's a great thing for the county to add a few more hospitality beds. I'm a big fan of the hospitality business here in Rappahannock County. I've seen a lot of our students be very successful with it after school, and I just, I just want to say I'm in support of it. And my bride, Beth, said she's in support of it too, but when I asked her for a letter that said, "I will support anything my husband says," she just wouldn't give me that. Such suspicious looks. But anyway, but I think she would attest that she supports it as well. She just couldn't be here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anita Ramos Hampton District, I want to echo Mr. Swindler. The Masseys are wonderful neighbors. Mr. Massey cuts my hay. I've known them ever since I bought my property, and I think this is a wonderful use of a historic building. They'll take good care of it, and they'll do a good job, and it'll be a plus for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Anyone else? Public hearing.
Should we refer to Massey?
Yes, sir.
Or should I refer to both?
No.
Okay.
My name is James Fletcher Massey. I'm the applicant for this application, and if you all have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I'd just like to say that, thank you all for taking the time to review this application. I think it's fitting for the county, being an agriculture-based county, and with tourism as a draw for this county, I thought that this was something that would help the economic base of our county. I'd like to also say that the tourist home business in Rappahannock is not a new thing. It's been here since the '30s, and I'd also like to say that I'm probably one of the few residents, lifelong residents of this county that can say that their grandparents owned and ran a tourist home in the county. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Hopefully, there are no back taxes. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, and there's no one on Zoom, no offense to the county, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Madam Chair, to move this along, the Masseys are constituents of mine on Richmond Road, and I would put forward a motion to approve special exception permit number 23-03-01, including those conditions that Ms. Summers articulated and that were settled upon by the, our colleagues on the planning commission. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, that's a maximum of four guests, no food, service offered facility, and the permit terminates upon sale or transfer of the property with that condition excluding family.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion of second discussion.
I mean, just to say something, it was a very straightforward application at the planning commission level as well, and I think the applicant for bringing us such a clean application that allows the process to move forward quickly.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know, Mr. Fraser, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Since this thing went through so fast, are we going to require them to stay the rest of the meeting?
We haven't eaten dinner yet.
They haven't eaten dinner.
We won't add that to the motion.
I do want to say, take off Mr. Swindler's words. I mean, it's, you, you are so fortunate, have such a spectacular property, and it is awesome that people will be able to come and visit and get a little taste of what you're able to live every day. So, it's great.
I'm pretty sure I read somewhere that you wanted to share the history with others, and I really liked, I, I thought that was very nice of you to, to be able to offer that to people that don't necessarily know where hamburger comes from.
Good point.
All right, we have a motion of second. All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for coming out and getting some dinner.
Michelle, I think you're up again.
Go ahead.
The next application we have is for Forrester. This property is located on Deerfield Lane and includes five existing homes. The property is 400 acres in size and zoned conservation and agricultural. Mr. Forrester plans to offer four of the five homes on the farm as short-term rental homes while he resides in one of the homes, but would like to maintain the flexibility. Should he decide to move into another, then he can rent the one he just moved out of, be able to rent that out. Deerfield Lane is a private right-of-way, but only serves the homes located on this property. This property also fronts on state route. The Health Department commented that the septic systems serving the dwellings were all evaluated and repaired or upgraded in 2011 and 2012, and it's all indicated as, in the staff report, what repairs or upgrades were made. V.com commented they have no objections. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request at their April 19 meeting, and after listening to public comment and discussion with the applicant, the Planning Commission moved to recommend approval with the following conditions. One, this would be for five tourist homes. Two, the staff recommended conditions of the number of bedrooms for each home. 61 Deerfield Lane would be five bedrooms. 88 Deerfield Lane would be three bedrooms. 134 Deerfield Lane would be four bedrooms. 180 Deerfield Lane would be a one-bedroom, and 210 Deerfield Lane would be a one-bedroom. No pets would be allowed. Any additional lighting will be down shielded. No firearm usage on-site by tenants. No additional day visitors. The owner or manager will live on the property, and the permit expires if the property is sold outside of the family, and the applicant is here and present.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We didn't allow the applicant to speak before the public hearing last time. That's certainly possible. As I noted, for the other special exception, this special exception has been advertised as required by Section 15-22204 of the Code of Virginia. Neighbors were notified, and a yard sign was placed in front of the property. As noted previously, tourist home is not an allowed use by right at this location, but a special exception allows you to place conditions on the use that will make it compatible with those by right uses, and the applicants have provided a substantial package for you to review and have theoretically met the burden of providing those requirements as required by Section 17047-G. Staff report is attached and reiterates all the conditions that Ms. Summers just listed that were recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Forrester five tourist home. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing item only, please be recognized, and when you come up, let us know your name and the district that you live in. All right. Come on up.
Just introduce yourself again.
Yeah, I'm Edwin Forrester. I live in the Piedmont District on the property with my wife and our daughter, and will continue to live there for the foreseeable future. Only thing I had to, thought I would mention is about the, we had put the firearm restriction at the zoning meeting, and I've just been turning it over, and I think my conscience kind of compelled me to just address that one thing. It's ultimately inconsequential to me because I'm not going to allow people to use, renters to use firearms on my property anyway, but it just seems like, to me, a weird place for the county to start setting the precedent of regulating firearm usage on private property. And, you know, so I'll just leave it at that. It's always inconsequential to me, and if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Given the scene.
The other thing I was going to say is like, as an example, I don't know other properties, like this past property was 300 and what, 40, 50 acres. My property's 500 acres. They weren't restricted on firearm usage. I don't think that's a normal restriction that's put on other properties, especially of this size. I'm over a quarter mi, the closest building to any property line that I'll be renting out is over a quarter mile, so.
Thank you.
Just my two cents.
I'm going to close the public hearing first. Anyone else? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to the board. Oh, did you have something to say? I'm sorry. I didn't see a hand. Come. Yes, ma'am.
I've never done anything like this. Hi, I'm one of your neighbors. I do. Nice to meet you.
I'm Diane Botker. The only reason I'm coming is, first of all.
I apologize. Can you help me with your last name?
Diane.
Last name is?
B-O-E-T-G-E-R.
Thank you.
First of all, I know you had sent a letter to all your neighbors and gave your phone number. That was very nice. Thank you.
I actually need to apologize about that because shortly after I sent that letter, I got a, we got rid of our home phone service.
Oh. Well, I never apologized, but thank you for that. The only reason I'm showing up is, I've never done anything like this. I'm a little nervous. I recall about maybe 10 or 12 years ago, I just want to relay this to you.
Ms. Botager, do me a favor, please, and speak to us.
10 or 12 years ago, and probably you all remember this. I remember somebody had put a light on a barn on the property, I believe that isn't, that's having the, that's in the discussion, and somebody up on one of the hills said, "That's a lot, it's a really big barn light." And they came before you, and they wrote a letter, and they said, "It's so much light." The night pollution at that time was a big discussion going on in the county, and I believe that barn light was either removed or there was a shade put over it. And it was really an interesting concept because the night, because as, as the buildings continue and the lighting goes up, I really later now realized that was kind of, seemed to me to be over, overly done, but now I'm looking back, I'm like, that was kind of cool because it, it will add more and more and more lighting. So, I saw that that is something you're considering and keeping the lighting low, because if you have tenants filling all the houses and there's more light, I just appreciate that that's something that's already been brought up, because it does make sense that you don't want to have more and more lighting showing up on the ground floor since it's a lot of agriculture, and it's a scenic highway, and it is a lovely area that, you know, the, the stars and, and the night sky can be seen. So, I just wanted to bring that back out, and thank you for having the lighting keeping low at night, and I'm sure the people that live above you will appreciate it too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. All right, now we'll close public hearing.
Final call?
Final call. Yes. Ms. Smith, you want to?
Yeah, I, I just want to address, I, I know there's some curiosity probably about why we had a firearms restriction on this particular application when we typically don't do that, and certainly, as a 2A county, we typically wouldn't do that, but it was something that the neighbors brought up during the public hearing and that the applicant seemed willing to meet the neighbors on, and so it was included in the terms that we referred up to the Board of Supervisors because it did, I believe, lean some neighbors to support the application. In particular, they were concerned that when they were out on their horses, if there were firearms being discharged on the property, it may spook their horses. I do recall, it did not say no firearms usage on-site by tenants. I thought it said no firearms usage on-site by tenants unless the owner is present, unless owner or manager is present, which I think is probably more agreeable to the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, yes, it's more agreeable, but I, my main point was saying, you know, the rules were set, and they're going to be the president for the next.
There's nobody on Zoom, so.
On Zoom, so it doesn't matter who's we can hear.
The president for the county for the next, you know, hundreds of years, and it just seems to me, I, I don't want anyone to think, take this as like a veiled threat of litigation because I'm the last person on earth that's interested in that, and like I said, it's ultimately inconsequential to me, but I don't, I just, it seems like a, not very, like a, if it went to court, I don't see that being like constitutional in my mind.
I would just say that during the public hearing at the Planning Commission, you were very agreeable to that term or that condition on this application. In fact, I said, I think you said you didn't want people coming out from the city and discharging firearms all over your property anyway, and that was fine, and you were very agreeable to it. And my position as a supervisor is that we placed that condition on your application. I don't know if we had not placed that condition on your application, if it would have driven people to attend this evening and speak against your application or ask for that condition to be, to be applied to your application, because we notice these things and post the information. People have certain expectations, and I've attended meetings on which I was not on the governing body or the board or the authority hearing the information, and if things changed midstream and they're maybe not what people thought they were getting when they saw the advertisement, it would maybe drive people to attend that aren't here this evening.
Yeah, and I completely understand the concern, because I hold the same concern. The other, just the other weird thing about it too is that every, every time a firearm goes off now, I shoot quite a bit, and, and so do the police get called, and they come and ask, "Was it a tenant or was it you?" And how do they prove that on 400 acres? It just seems like a very sticky, weird situation, and I completely understand your concerns and, and the neighbors' concerns because I hold the same concerns. But, like I said, it's ultimately inconsequential because not, I'm not going to allow people to be discharging firearms on my property around my families that are strangers to me.
Which is the idea, I think. I mean, it's, you're going, I mean, five.
It is a, also, I think you're going to say, it's a matter of the intensity of the use that you're proposing.
Yeah, I think that's right, and what, I mean, looking at your application and the one prior to it, both involve, thankfully, really large properties, and at least when I look at these applications, I think about any possible adverse effects on neighboring properties, and clearly you have a massive property that works in your favor, and so, and I think Ms. Smith is exactly right, there's now an expectation among your neighbors who feel like, all things being equal, from a light and noise perspective, nothing is going to sort of encroach upon their, their own property rights. And so, you're probably right, that it, in the end, has no, the, the, the no firearms has no practical effect because I doubt that you would have five tourist homes filled with people shooting guns when you live on the property, but nevertheless, it's there just to make the point, and it doesn't, I don't know if you want to read the exact language, Ms. Summers, what the condition is, because it sounds like maybe.
It's on the screen. There was some debate at the Planning Commission meeting of whether that condition should be modified, and, you know, Ms. Summers recorded it here. Ultimately, the Board of Supervisors can apply whatever conditions you think are appropriate to align this use with the typical by right use in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
In my mind, he does bring up a valid concern, though, if he's out shooting and somebody calls the sheriff's office because we have this.
The sheriff's office is not going to be involved in the zoning matter.
No, if he's shooting his gun and the neighbor calls the sheriff's office and says he agreed to no gun shooting, and they drive all the way down 231 to check out who's shooting, and it's the gentleman that has the right to shoot, that's my only concern. I don't want to, I don't want our deputies going down.
Yeah, I, I don't think the sheriff's office is going to respond to an alleged zoning violation.
If there were five separate parcels, there's no question that there wouldn't be such a restriction.
Right.
I do have some concerns about, some constitutional concerns, and I think there's a statute that, I wish I'd known about this, that vaguely, I recall, was enacted in like the mid-'90s, and it did place a prohibition on zoning as a means of gun control. I can't think of the, of the exact language of that statute or if it still exists, but I just have some reservations about it, especially given the fact that if he was, if he was going to divide it up and find a parcel, there's no question, he couldn't do it. So, you know, if he's out there shooting, like I say, how, how's anybody going to enforce this except through him? You know, he's, he's the one who's saying, "I'm going to go, strangers come out and shoot, period," which is probably a wise thing. And so, he's got to dominion control of a zoning property, and I, I don't see how the, the condition as a zoning, as a special exception zoning condition is enforceable. I think it's overbroad. I think it may have some constitutional problems, and maybe I'd file that statute. If I wish I had known, I would have looked it up already, and I could, I could do that. If it were an instruction, so to do, I will. I'll give you a, a verdict on it, but.
And I reserve the right to just invite friends to come hunt for the day without staying on the property. They could be on the property, discharge.
That's not part of the permit.
I under, I understand. That's, that's why I think it's the restriction is sticky, because if I, if they have, the people that are renting, the, the Airbnbs can't shoot guns even though they can have guns on the property because they reserve that right constitutionally, but then I have friends coming over to hunt and shoot discharge arms. Yeah, so, I, I, I'm not trying to dip drum up a whole thing here, it's just, it's, just seemed, like gentleman said, it has, it seemed to me to have some constitutional thing. We took a pledge of allegiance to the flag before the zoning hearing, just to a constitutional purpose.
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion then that we table this pending an opinion from the county attorney.
Yeah, and I think to Ms. Smith's point, because it was advertised with a preset, set of conditions, if we were to remove a condition that otherwise, if it didn't exist, people would have showed up, it's a problem.
Well, I do, I need to be clear, the advertisement states the Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval with conditions. That does not bind the board.
That's correct.
You could, you could approve this with no conditions or 10 different conditions. It's not a legal issue in my mind.
But it's posted on board docs in such a way that it leads people to believe that those conditions will be imposed if it is.
There are any number of recommendations that come from the Planning Commission that are considered, massaged, adopted, not adopted. It's a recommendation.
If we table this, what's the timeline to get it back on?
Next month. Well, it'd be tabled until such a time as you bring it back, and it should table to a date, time, certain. Mr. Goff will not be at your next meeting.
Probably on electronic.
Yeah.
But you can send us your finding.
I can do that beforehand.
I think that's the right move to make.
I didn't hear a second.
I'll, I'll second the motion to table.
And so, is that to table until July 3rd?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, we have a motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. See you in July.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, I think you're on.
Well, at this point, I'll convene the Planning Commission. I think every member is here except for Mr. White.
This is the public hearing ordinance amendment, Board of Zoning Appeals, number of members.
Yes, Board members, as you're aware, you previously requested staff to advertise a, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment to modify the zoning ordinance. When you do that, you must advertise your intention to do so pursuant to the same section we referenced before, Code of Virginia, Section 15-22204. That includes a notice in the newspaper with a description of the change and then a location where a public can review the change. That change has been available in my office for the last few weeks. The change proposed modifies several sections of the zoning ordinance to change the number of BZA members from five to seven, and also to reference in several sections that a majority of the members must vote in the affirmative to approve an appeal or a variance. Currently, that would be three of five, and that would change it to four of seven. In addition, the amendment cleans up a few more straggling issues from the SUP to SE ordinance amendment that you adopted last month, changing the word BZA to board in 10 places, and also clarifies the fact that for special exceptions and special use permits, of which there are none categorized right now, you need a simple majority of the quorum present to approve a special exception rather than a majority of all members present, which is only required by the Code of Virginia for variances and appeals. So, the public hearing has been properly noticed. The information is available in my office, it's also available here on board docs, and before you can adopt, the Planning Commission will have to provide a recommendation. They can do that after you close your public hearing, and then the board can take action as you deem appropriate.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the Board of Zoning Appeals, number of members.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I live in the Wakefield District, and I strongly oppose the addition to the BZA membership. I think five has been the number that we've had since the inception of the BZA. I think they're, the adding, you've, you've reduced the amount of work that we're doing. To expand the board makes zero sense. It's not clear to me why you want to do it, except that, sort of like packing the court, I guess, but, you know, at this point, everybody, except for one member of the BZA, has taken the training courses, FOIA courses, everybody's on board, and I've been taking on additional duties as secretary, and I don't think there's really any need to expand it, and I think it would just be cumbersome, and there's no guarantee that you guys will like the additional members any more than you like those of us who are sitting on the board now. members any more than you like those of us who are sitting on the board now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm going to let Sheila.
You know I hate this.
You're getting good at it.
Um, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Um, here's the deal. What I understand is quite a few duties or some duties were taken away from the BZA. Okay, that's fine. It seemed to have been precipitated by some events that were recent and then for the suggestion to then add two more members to make it seven instead of five, I think is stupid, to be totally frank. Um, this whole thing seemed to have come about, uh, after a specific decision was made that was unpopular with some people and, uh, I agreed with the approval that was done and, uh, the reasons for it to be done. And so my view of this is that are we now going to enter a phase where if something is not pleasing to a specific group of people, are they going to knee jerk and Band-Aid something in response? And I don't think it's appropriate at all to do it that way. I think this is, I think this body has done very well with the five members, uh, and as this wonderful lady has said, that two new members may not be making decisions that are going to be pleasing to a group of people anyway. So I think you're just looking for trouble and I just think it's not well done.
Thank you.
And Ron Jamaklo, Jackson District and Chairman of the BZA. Uh, I'm in favor of increasing it. I think that, uh, as, as being chairman, you, you get a different perspective on a board and a problem we have had, quite honestly, recently is trying to find that there are people that want to be on the board, but they only can commit so much time. And there are a number of different jobs that need to be done and trying to find board members who have, have the available time has become difficult. And also, I think that uh, three people making a decision, which is what it comes down to, is a very small number. And, and I think to add an additional person into that process as far as the majority goes can be beneficial. So I think on, from, from the aspect of increasing that, I think, uh, that's not a bad idea. You've got, how many people do you have on the Planning Commission? Seven. So, what?
I didn't say that.
Oh, uh, so, you know, for the BZA in the same situation, have seven? Yes. And, and also, uh, it, when you have situations where, uh, for whatever reason, you have people that are, have conflict of interest or they're unable to make a meeting, you still are able to put together a quorum and conduct business. So I think, you know, from, uh, a board aspect, I think seven is not a bad number and quite honestly, you're not going to like this, but I think seven people on the Board of Supervisors would not be a bad idea with two independent people. And, and granted with the, the BZA, everyone's independent because we don't represent districts. But I think, you know, I, I, when I heard about this and, and in along that line, I also supported the fact that you took the permit, uh, permitting or whatever, and made it a single permit. That made perfect sense because no one knew what, what the difference was and it was very confusing and this way it, it's all going to this, in the same operation and it, and it may speed up the process. So that aspect. But in, on the other hand, though, I just want to make a comment on the fact that this whole change has come about because the BZA made a decision that you weren't in favor of. And the BZA is an independent body and it was believe, I believe when the state, you know, put it into the state code, that's what it was meant to be in that it gave citizens an opportunity to go outside the county structure or the municipal structure to a body to independently look at a decision and, and, and make their own decision and it, uh, not based on, and politics always comes into this. And that was, that was what I, I've heard at times in that the, uh, the BZA is not an elected body. So if people don't like what the BZA is doing, they can't unelect them or whatever. It's, it's on an appointment basis. But on the same, at the same time, that allows them to be totally independent and make their decisions based on, on the law, what's written, certain conditions, uh, at times precedent. Uh, so, you know, like I said, and I think that will help out with seven people even in that it, it's going to give you, you know, two more, two more voices as part of the process and I think that's going to be fairer to the citizens. And I think that's what it's all about. So I would encourage you to, uh, to pass this, but at the same time, I've heard, uh, comments that you in this, you know, may not be part of this process, but, uh, but that you would, you were looking at perhaps having the candidates that applied to positions on the BZA to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. And I think that would be a disservice to the citizens in that the whole idea is that this is a body that, that looks at it from a different angle and I think, you know, we have not made, I, I don't think our decision that caused all this was a bad decision. If, uh, if you talk to people in the county, they didn't understand what the deal was. So I think, you know, if, if you, if it were voted on or whatever, it probably would have passed and, and that has to be part of the process, although I know you don't think that that's a popular way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Catherine Ishi from Piedmont. Um, I would like to thank the board for, um, their attention to this matter. I think it shows, um, a very active and concerned board in dealing with what's going on in the county. Uh, I know there will be differences of opinion, but thank you for your attention to it. Um, I also will, would ask you not to increase, however, the number of members on the BZA from five to seven. I don't think it's necessarily more efficient to have more members at the table. Um, my experience in other jurisdictions is it actually just tends to make it a little bit more cumbersome. Um, there's an old adage that everything that needs to be said has been said, but not everyone has yet had a chance to say it. That's often what happens when you get more people is you just kind of add more voices to the process without necessarily adding effectiveness or efficiency. Um, if, in terms of effectiveness, um, it's also, I don't think necessarily more effective to have just more people. Um, the BZA, as some have mentioned, is not a representational body in the same way that the Planning Commission or the board is. Um, and so maybe in larger jurisdictions like Fairfax County or others, uh, you know, it, it may be beneficial to have larger BZAs when you've got a whole huge number of issues coming before them, but particularly since you've taken away their main bulk of, um, duties, which is the SUPs, um, what they're left with now are primarily, um, quasi judicial actions. And these don't necessarily require a whole lot of people. What it requires is, um, an understanding and an ability to apply a lot of ordinance and code requirements, which in and of itself requires an ability to seek out and implement advice, professional and legal advice. So I don't think necessarily getting more people is going to in and of itself influence that. Um, I also think, as others have said, and I, I, for my own part, don't think that the board is trying to pack the quarter or any such thing, but I have heard it mentioned that the board is concerned about the question of whether the BZA might reflect some of the, um, opinions of, of the board or some of the positions of the board. And I also think that that is not necessarily something that would be healthy. I think the, the codes creates three separate bodies, um, with three separate purposes for dealing with land use, the important issues of land use in our, in a community, which is Planning Commission, the board and the, and the BZA. Um, and so I guess that's a signal to hurry up and end, huh? Um, so I, I think it's healthy to have differences of opinion, even if we don't always like them. Thank you, Gary. You don't need to make it that low, Gary. No, just kidding. Um, so, uh, anyway, I, I, but I, I don't think that's where the board is coming from, in my opinion. I think they're just trying to make the most effect, effective and efficient process and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
John Capielli, Hampton District. I think everybody can hear me. Um, my wife tells me that I speak sometimes in a way that makes people think that I'm trying to be mean. So what I'm about to say, I do not mean it in a mean way. However, the BZA is being punished like a little kid that did something wrong that their parents didn't want them to do. It wasn't harmful. It was actually a good thing, but it was something that the parent didn't really want them to do. That's why they're supposed to be in, independent. The Planning Commission, I've gone to lots of meetings, as you all know, is almost a rubber stamp. It's a bunch of puppets that are put in place by each one of you. Um, you decide that this is somebody that you like or you value their opinion and they get put on there. The BZA is appointed by a judge. I've heard certain people here at the table say, we should have control over it and over these permits because we're elected, which kind of makes it sound like you think that you know more than what this other person does because of the fact that you were elected. You are elected because you know a lot of people in your district. You know, there's not, if, if this isn't a million people vote, um, each one of you had 300, 400 votes. Uh, nobody's getting to run for Congress on that. Last but not least, proof of this is we're going to all be in court at the end of this month at the appellate division because of a permit that we attempted to get at your direction and the judge found that the basic regulations that you all put into place were not followed.
You're going a little beyond the substance of public hearing.
Let me get there. And the point being is, is that there is a lot of work behind these applications. I'm not saying that you don't do all the work, but I've seen the work that the BZA does as individual members and they come very prepared. On some of your applications, you absolutely do. On mine, there was no preparation. So trying to put more weight on top of you of putting all these other applications on, um, don't you have enough on your table already as a Board of Supervisors?
I know what I'm trying to say. That was already decided.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands and no one on Zoom, I'll close the public hearing and open discussion to the board.
I just wanted to say, and it had been on my mind to say this tonight, I don't know if people realize how often the Planning Commission meets, but this is the second regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors that the members of the Planning Commission have been asked to attend so that we could make some changes to the ordinance. And in addition to that, we also had a work session with the Berkeley Group. We're undertaking revisions to the ordinance and the signed ordinance in particular that we will have extensive work sessions on. And we did the same thing several years ago when we did the comprehensive plan. So I just want to go to bat for the members of the Planning Commission, who I know are very conscientious members of the community. And to hear them called puppets is disgusting because I think we get paid what, $20 a meeting to attend Planning Commission?
Thirty.
Thirty a meeting to attend Planning Commission meetings and the hours of preparation and forethought and thoughtfulness and experience and the many different walks of life and backgrounds that people bring to the table in their body are very much appreciated. And especially over time, as people build knowledge and experience on that board, they become invaluable. And I would hate for anyone to be discouraged from their continued service on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
One member from Jackson District, uh, many years back was accused of being on there for the money. Anyway, I have to agree with you that, uh, Planning Commission by and large does a lot of the heavy lifting for the applications and the zoning ordinance. Uh, may not, may not always look like that, but there's a lot of it, you know, study goes into things, site visits, a lot of work goes in.
So as noted earlier, the Planning Commission will have to, uh, discuss and make a recommendation to the board. Um, you've heard some comments born against the number of members and just allow me to remind you that this amendment before you is actually threefold, I guess. It changes the number of members. It clarifies the, um, the vote that would need to take place in order to approve a special exception and then it cleans up ten instances of the word BZA to board. So, uh, as staff, I would request that you definitely consider the last two items, even if you're not interested in the first item and, um, you can do that if you'd like. We just have to make sure it's clear in the document that you ultimately put forward and, uh, and vote to approve.
So you're like Radar, Radar O'Reilly, anticipating my question. So if we, if we were to take the last two parts of the three, we don't run into any, if I understand correctly, any legal issue in terms of an ordinance amendment being void of any issue because we've advertised, advertised the full package of elements of the ordinance change.
Right.
And if we were to adopt less than the total, we would still have advertised it properly, correct?
That's right. The descriptive summary identified all three items. The amended document identified all three items, multiple items, into those three categories. And further, Mr. Goff and I have discussed this at some point in time and come to that completely.
And then on the, on the, we'll call it the, uh, part two of the, um, advertised ordinance amendment, could you just again repeat? It's a, it's a little bit complicated. It has to do with what constitutes a
That's not the right document.
Physical quorum for a vote.
So the number of members, uh, needed to approve a special exception or a special use permit, if you will, um, is driven by state code as being a majority of those present informing a quorum of the board, the BZA, uh, whatever the case may be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you had a local ordinance that stated, uh, as shown on the screen here, that, um, that an application and any accompanying, uh, conditions or restrictions may be approved by the issuing authority only upon affirmative vote of at least three members of a motion to approve. A majority of a quorum, if less than three, is not sufficient. Note Code of Virginia 1522312. If you review Code of Virginia 1522312, that speaks solely to variances and appeals, not to special exceptions. And it, I do not think it's appropriate to have that requirement in your ordinance for special exceptions. And I'm not quite sure the state really empowers you to do so, although it does allow you to make rules, local rules. We could argue whether this is one or not, but.
So it's the bottom.
When it is specific. So clearly you must do it for variances and appeals. Uh, it doesn't say that you must do it. It doesn't say that you must do it for special exceptions.
But the bottom line effect is that we, with the ordinance change, we would, we would then be codified locally, consistent with the Code of Virginia, requiring a majority of those present forming a quorum.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I make one comment that I forgot to make, which is relevant to
No.
No, sir. Unless the Board wants to hear, I think we'll pass that.
It's a very small thing. It has to do with the annual meeting. It has to do with the annual meeting.
The change is not advertised here, so that no change is not identified here can be made tonight.
But that needs to take place, and if you're changing
It can take place some future days.
Were there any, I just want to identify the members of the Planning Commission that are here this evening. Ms. Ritter in the front row, Brian Shuland in the back row, Henry, Tommy Atkins, and Tommy Sisk back in the corner. So do you all have any questions or discussion or emotion in regards to this ordinance?
I'll let Henry speak. I'll speak very loud. I think y'all put a lot of thought into this, particularly with all the changes except going to the seven members. If the Board was able to pick seven members, then I would support that, but if it picked remains with judicial decision, I have problems with that. Because historically, it's become more evident as time went on that our judges are not familiar with that. All the judges are basically flat on Canada, and not one believes about Canada. Their preference is to be in your competition and things like this, so they don't, probably don't read the news, they don't have, they don't know what's going on out here. They see somebody who doesn't have a patient on, they read it and say, "Oh, okay, thank you, that's it." And I hate to use the word, but it provides a great opportunity if somebody is somewhat a zealot and they're due one, to get on the Board, to get into a position of policy change. And it's like playing Russian roulette. Instead of pulling the trigger five times, you're pulling it seven times. So I think y'all done a great job of remedying the problem of reducing responsibility. I think maybe the BZA may now evolve into something more akin to this Bill of Code violation Board that we have that means very frequently. So I'd support everything but the change.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins, did you have anything?
Yeah, I support everything except this increase in the number from five to seven. I think it's useless, I think it's nothing but confusing to me to get more, go into the mix of this. And if we're trying to address some issue with performance or whatever, you don't solve it by throwing more people at it, you don't solve it by throwing more one at it. I recommend that we support all the others, but not, the numbers remain to be set because, I mean, five, I'm sorry, five. And because if we're going to have less work, we'll have more time to do their due diligence and check in the thing. I also think that that's a common of members of the Planning Commission being puppets.
Mr. Sisk, did you have anything?
I'm a puppet.
Sorry?
If you think I am a puppet, feel the pressure.
I was just being blunt. I can see, actually, he's a big politician, you can make the argument, whether it's a medium people or less people. More people, obviously, and not being small like this, you have the ability, if people are going, I myself was going, almost all of them made graduation, stuff happens like happens. But I agree with Mr. Henry on the fact that personally, I don't like the way the BZA members are appointed. I think the whole families of the country, what the checks and balances are, all be stoned accountability in an independent board, while that sounds good, if there's no room or there's no ability for the people that they don't like something to voice that opinion and force that change, they become disillusioned and disintegrated. And I will second the motion. I can assure you, I have nobody's puppet.
Thank you. Mr. Shuland, did you have anything to add?
Not to add. I agree with Mr. Henry, like he said, Lord.
All right. Ms. Ritter?
I agree with the, my members of the Planning Commission and support a resolution except for expansion of the BZA.
Well, having heard from everyone, then, just to keep things moving along, do we have a motion in regards to this attachment this evening?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the change except for the increase of the Board of Supervisors to seven.
Is that enough detail?
Definitely enough for recommendation.
Okay, sounds good. And a second?
Second.
All right, well, Mr. Atkins.
Who did you have?
Mr. Atkins. Mr. Henry made the motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Atkins. And with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll say nay, which just proves that they're not puppets.
All right, members of the Board?
Sure, I'll move this along. I appreciate all the work of our fine Planning Commission members, and I appreciate you speaking up for yourselves, and I also will defend you wholeheartedly for your hard work, and I appreciate all that you do. I'll go ahead and put forward a motion.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
I would like this to be crystal clear, and we have a numbered document here, and if you, in your motion to adopt an ordinance, could exclude the changes in the various lines of, that relate to that, I can mark them if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna do it, just so I could take all the shorts, but
He probably knows where
I just wanted to talk about this for a minute while we're marking up the document, and just say that I take ownership of the idea of expanding from five to seven, and it was never done with any sort of punitive spirit behind it or manipulative spirit behind it. I went to the Code of Virginia after the recent issues that I think we're all familiar with on the BZA in regards to the appeal that it was handled, the way that it was handled. I don't have a quarrel with the outcome, but sometimes how you do things is possibly even more important than what you do. And we were facing a situation where legally, we could have been in trouble no matter what we did. And that's very important to recognize and to try to safeguard against for the future. And so I did go back to the Code of Virginia and read, because I'd never read all of the code as it pertains to the BZA, and read through it, and I did see that there was an opportunity to expand the BZA from five members to seven members. And my only spirit and intention in recommending that we expand the BZA from five to seven is that there's more people to do the work. Appeals are important. They're really important to get right. And I personally don't understand how you can say, "We're an independent body, and so we've done things independently," and then your justification for why you did something being right, saying, "If you just go and ask anybody, they'll tell you if you take a popularity contest." It was a legal opinion, and appeal is a legal opinion, and it's very, very important that they hold water. And that is the only reason that I requested that we consider expanding the BZA from five to seven, is that in something as important as appeals, the details matter because, as we on this Board know, if we consider taking up litigation, we pay for it. And I don't want to be in a position where something is appealed, we don't like it, and we have to foot the whole bill for the litigation. And so appeals are so important that I thought expanding it by two additional people was completely in order. But if people don't want it, and the rest of the Board doesn't think it's worthwhile, I certainly understand.
I see the order.
Thank you.
I see the order.
I'd rather pay for two more members on it on an ongoing basis than pay for litigation for an appeal that wasn't handled correctly.
Mr. Woodson?
Sure, I'll go ahead and put forward a motion that we adopt the zoning ordinance amendment presented, but striking Article 15.
Striking changes to.
Pardon me, I'm about to sneeze. Striking the proposed changes to Article 15 and proposed changes to Article 16 of the draft amendment that was advertised. And for the record, those articles, the changes to the articles, Article 15 is administration enforcement, Article 16, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, so the motion is to adopt the ordinance amendment, but striking the changes within those articles.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. Let's go ahead with discussion.
We would recommend that we table this until Mr. Carney's back.
Yeah, and I've gone back and forth on the five or seven members, and you made really good points, Ms. Smith, at our last meeting, which made me think about it again, but I heard loud and clear the overwhelming sentiment from our Planning Commission counterparts tonight, so I'm in support of them and the thought they've all put into it, and it's not, we can
I completely understand it. We can disagree.
We can agree to disagree. Yeah, so anyway, I think we should just proceed with the changes in my motion.
Hearing what I heard tonight, and been thinking about this for a couple of days, in my mind, the way I looked at it is, we have shortened the workload, we have, or they, the BZA, have kind of restructured a little bit on their officers, and in my mind, if we gave them six months to see that everything's working appropriately without making a change tonight, we can bring this back up in January before the vote for their Board.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, at least the latter two parts of the ordinance amendment do clean up thoroughly. The, I would say, the more significant change, which was to consolidate the permit reviews to the Board, at the Board of Supervisors level. So if we were to adopt the amendment tonight, and then, as you said, if needed, if circumstances change or dictate, we can revisit the question of number of members at a later date.
Mr. Fraser?
I think I voiced my sentiments, so I believe we should, we should adopt the resolution as advertised with the increase in the number of BZA members.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
You roll call for the ordinance.
Mr. Fraser?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
And I also.
I put forward a motion to adopt the resolution as advertised with
It's an ordinance, to be clear.
I'm sorry?
It's an ordinance, just to be clear.
Right, of the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I would just say, I'm, I just go back to this Board a few months ago, and again, with that appeal, and we can't dictate who gets on the BZA. And folks are right, we may get to people that we are very displeased with, but we can make a recommendation to the judge for who we would like to see appointed, and we could recommend people that have a lot of experience so that when an appeal comes before the BZA, we feel confident that it will be handled correctly. Nothing's ever perfect, but I don't want to see us in the same position we were in earlier this year in regards to an appeal. And that is not being anti-business, that is not a comment about the owner of that business or the business in any way that that decision was about. That is a commentary on the way that the decision was reached by the BZA.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Nay.
And nay for me as well.
I'll move that we go ahead and table this until our July meeting, and I think, if I'm correct, because we've received a recommendation from the Planning Commission, we won't, will not have to ask them to come back
That's correct.
Again, for a joint meeting, so I'm mindful of the time spent on this, and I apologize for the continued delay, but at least they won't have to come back. So that's a motion to table until next, next month's regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
They might need the extra money, though.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Motion to table it?
Yeah, we don't need, I don't think we need one.
If you're gonna table it, I think you should have a motion
Okay.
To a date.
Which is what I just
Said. July 3.
It'll be, motion to table our regular Board of Supervisors meeting, first Monday in July, 7:00 PM, such a normally reserved for land use matters and public hearings.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This moves us into sign ordinance.
I think we've got regular public comment period.
Oh, sorry, I jumped it. Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up, give us your name and your district.
I think of myself as tall.
You are.
I'm not in front of this. Hi, Dabby Kirshman, Piedmont District. I didn't speak when the tourist home applications were up because I didn't have any particular questions about those permits. I do have concerns about the overall number and percentage of county dwellings being used as short-term rentals, and just big picture questions for you guys. Does the county track the percentage of properties leased for short-term rentals? Do you distinguish between county residents who use an accessory building or second property for short-term rentals versus out-of-county owners whose rap-honic properties are used for short-term rentals a significant portion of the year? Is there a sense of where short-term rentals fit within the overall goals of the comprehensive plan? I think a lot of residents, myself included, are worried about their impact on community fabric. I've used Airbnb, and without disparaging any particular short-term rental tenant or landlord, I think it's fair to be concerned that when housing is taken over by a continuous stream of visitors rather than occupied by county citizens, there is a deleterious effect on community stability. And I practiced saying deleterious at home many times, and I got it mostly right. Does the Board of Supervisors consider these big-picture issues when short-term rental applications are approved?
That's, thank you.
Thanks, well said.
Anyone else, public comment?
Ron Mackel, Jackson District, and Chairman of the BZA, and I just want to public comment, make my comment that I was trying to make, in that in the ordinance that you're dealing with, you require, or it states that the annual meeting for the BZA is in January. You are requiring us to give you a candidate for the Planning Commission for your January meeting. We cannot do that because our meeting in January is after your meeting in January, and we are trying to rewrite our rules and procedures to have our annual meeting in December so we can meet your requirements to give you a candidate for the Planning Commission. commission. And if you're going to make a change in the ordinance, this would be the appropriate time to do that, because we are trying to rewrite our procedures, and quite frankly, we'll just have to, you know, rewrite our, you know, if we can't, if we still have to do it in January by your regulation, then we still have to do it in January, and we're not going to be able to give you what you want. It's a simple request, and you can just throw it in there, and that will solve the problem. But at the same time also, and this has been fairly recent, rappahannic, is that the BCA has made their recommendation for a member of the planning commission. And because of local feelings, politics, people on the planning commission or whatever, that request has not been honored. And you, as a board, actually recently have sort of come together in that, like, for your recommendations for the planning commissions now, it's sort of whoever the supervisor wants on the planning commission, you're going to honor that request. And that's appropriate. But at the same time, I think that it's appropriate that if the planning commission, because we've got, and if it stays at five members, we've got five different positions, and you try to, as a board, dole out the responsibilities. And one of them is the planning commission. In this past time, we had our vice chairman, we had appointed or recommended someone that was not accepted. So now the vice chairman, you chose to be the representative. So now, last, in our last meeting, we had to reorganize our board in order to, you know, give everybody, not overburden people on our board, because it's not like we're paid a ton of money to do this. So I would ask in the future also that when the planning commission, I mean, the BCA makes a recommendation for the planning commission, you honor that recommendation. Thank you.
I just want to state, as the current board appointee to the planning commission, I did not request or pick Ms. Ritter to serve as the BCA representative to the planning commission, but I am delighted she is with us this year, and I think she's doing a great job.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment?
John Capielli, Hampton District. I apologize before, I'll apologize again. Sometimes the words don't come out right. Puppet was probably the wrong one, but the influence that the Board of Supervisors has over the appointments onto the planning commission, and of the decisions that are made by the planning commission are slanted sometimes towards what they think that the Board of Supervisors want. It's interesting sometimes when a application is denied at the planning commission, but can still come on through to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors will actually vote for it. That probably upsets the planning commission, because the planning commission said, we already said no, but they're only advisory. So I used the wrong word, especially to you, Mr. Atkins. I don't think that anybody tells you what to do.
Mr. Capielli?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else for public comment, we will close the public comment.
Do we have another public comment period tonight, or is that it?
That's it.
I did just want to mention, too, the planning commission did look into the number of tourist homes recently, and they are pretty stable with a count in the 30s, because as some tourist homes come into approvals, others will drop out, people move away, people sell their homes. So it has actually been a relatively stable number. We don't differentiate between whether there is an owner on site or not. However, the intensity of the use may dictate whether or not we think that is appropriate on the application. And in general, when we consider approving tourist towns, we do take into consideration principle seven of the comprehensive plan, which is attached in the packet tonight, that we promote only economic growth that assists in maintaining our existing balance and is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character, and does not adversely affect active farm operations, forestry operations, residential neighborhoods, tourist industry, and the county's fiscal stability. So just wanted to give a few answers while I had them at my fingertips.
All right, we're moving into the sign ordinance amendment review.
Yes, so I wanted to provide an update for the board and then seek some direction. When the sign ordinance was last before you, I shared with you that we had received feedback from the Berkeley Group. They provided a detailed memo, that memo was attached to this agenda item. And that was at your last regular meeting, which was also joint with the planning commission. At that time, I think it was Mr. Henry that made a recommendation for myself and Mr. Goff to tear through the memo, digest what the Berkeley Group suggested, and incorporate that into your draft ordinance. We've completed that task, and that draft is also provided for you here, with a tracked changes, only showing those changes from the version that you saw before the Berkeley Group recommendations, to after the Berkeley Group recommendations, and then a clean version. So we're prepared to talk through any of those changes. I assume you've all read them and studied them very carefully, and we don't need to do that, but we can. But what we need to know is, what do you want to do going forward? Do you believe the document is ready for public hearing? And if so, would you like that to happen in a joint fashion, like you've done a couple times here? Would you like that to roll through the planning commission and then to the board?
We're still adjourned, we're still in joint meeting.
Yes.
I'd be interested to hear from members of the planning commission, sort of their view of this, because I know you've really been in the details the last year. I feel like we're in good shape, so I, before I recommend a joint here, I just want to know.
I mean, when last the planning commission met, it is like cereals, isn't it, in these meetings? When last we met, these changes were not in place.
That's correct.
And you all were meeting, you, Mr. Curry, and the county attorney were meeting the following Friday to review the changes to sort of hold water legally in the document. There were also, I would say, stylistic and some additional changes that the Berkeley Group listed as possible, but not critically important to the integrity of the document. I mean, I'm open to another joint meeting personally, and it certainly, I would like to hear from the members of the planning commission also, because that will make three months in a row of joint meetings.
Well, and to that end, Mr. Goff will not be able to join us in person at the next meeting, and so maybe you want to take a month off, I don't know, and have him here when you do that public hearing.
Yeah, because on the earlier SE permit, we kind of know where we stand on that. You're gonna provide a legal opinion on the firearms question, then the ordinance amendment that we just talked about, we don't need the planning commission members to come back, they've already voted on their recommendation. So finally, on this, we, I mean, could we, with the planning commission at their regular planning commission meeting, hold a public hearing, and then we subsequently take it up, or is it best done in a joint way?
So it's still June, so the law hasn't changed, which means that you need to run an advertisement in the newspaper two successive weeks with the, and closest to the public hearing, not closer than five days. And I don't know if the planning commission could do that before their meeting.
I was just trying to make life easier.
Good thought.
Where we do it concurrently.
After July 1, the five days doesn't count anymore. That might make a change, but you have to do other things.
I mean, it's easier for us, it's not easier for the planning commission members.
But they need the money.
I don't think we get paid for a meeting.
I guess the question is, could it be advertised for a public hearing to coincide with the planning commission's regular meeting? And they make a recommendation thereafter, and then we take it up?
So I think what, if you didn't have a joint meeting, I think your option to accommodate the calendar and schedule would be for the planning commission to consider a public hearing in July. And you consider it in August. And your hearings would be advertised concurrently. You won't know the recommendation from the planning commission when your advertisement is out, but you'll have it by the time you have your public.
I think that's, I mean, to me, this is quite a bit of to go through. To go through all the Berkeley Group recommendations and compare it against the text as it's been revised. And we have, we did not take up those additional recommendations beyond the legal ones that staff worked through. So I do, I don't think it would be very time-consuming, but I do think it is a worthwhile exercise to wrap it up.
I do want to clarify, Mr. Goff and I went through every single recommendation and looked at how that might or should or should not be incorporated into our ordinance. Some, we said, thank you for the suggestion, and moved on.
I thought that would be the case.
All right, well, let's just take a shot here. I'll put forward a motion that we refer the amended sign ordinance to the planning commission for a public hearing to be held in August at the, I'm sorry, in July, at the planning commission's regularly scheduled July meeting.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And so just to be clear, you're also authorizing staff to advertise your public hearing in August?
Yeah.
What are the new changes to the law? It's not totally off topic, but.
It's actually a huge change, that changed the notification requirements for nearly everything in the code, and tried to align things. So there's several actions that require one week notice, several require two week notice, some that require three week notice. And so it took away the requirement for a descriptive description of the change, but added in other requirements based on the number of parcels that'll be changed, and then took away the five and 21-day requirement, so it's just two weeks before. So you had, board meetings are on a Monday, so the preceding Thursday newspaper doesn't make the five days, but once that rule's gone, then we can use the preceding Thursday paper. I don't know if I made that any clearer.
You don't have to be as concerned with the descriptive language.
You don't, but you have to tell them where the ordinance can be reviewed, which you didn't technically have to do before.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Who was the second?
I'm the second, and I'll still second with that amendment in place, but to hear from the board here in August.
Yeah, that was.
Teamwork. All right. Let's see, is this real call or regular?
That's regular.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
And, ma'am, sure, before we, oh, we need to adjourn the planning commission.
And with that, I will thank the planning commission members for their attendance this evening, and adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady. We'll see you soon.
And what was the time and date for our continued meeting?
Right, you will have a motion to continue the meeting till June 20 at 5:30 PM.
Here. Okay, I move that we continue our regular Board of Supervisors meeting to 5:30 PM in the Rappahann County Courthouse on June 20, 2023.
That's the motion I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.